Davis Avenue, Sound will be see Tuesday, February the eleventh, two thousand twenty five at seven oh three. We acknowledge and respect the indigenous people within whose true alliance we're meeting today. Now that we've called the meeting to order, we'll adopt the agenda right from meeting of three dash twenty five of Tuesday, February eleven, two thousand twenty five be adopted as amended from Council's procedure by law six six three two thousand fourteen scheduled date to include a new business section, a budget discussion section, administration report section, and a public question period. Any additions? Here are none. All in favor? Delegation now, and now we're into the budget discussion.
Welcome. Thank you. Thanks for having me. I'll just set up my screen here by sharing it. So thanks for having me. So this is the first budget discussion for two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty nine budget.
Just to get people on, what I'm gonna, and I should maybe wait for the CEO, but what I'm gonna do is because we've got public here before the CFO is allowed to leave, we're gonna open, I'm gonna open up to public for questions.
And so everything presented here today is just kind of draft discussion, you know, nothing solidified. This is the first time council seeing it in its entirety in a package. And I'll go through the agenda here. As you know, I am a drawer when I'm presenting, so feel free to follow along on screen or follow along in your booklet, whichever you prefer. So the agenda for the presentation, the budget presentation is, I had to hit the spoiler alert offer in the beginning, so the draft rates and fees are right at the beginning. And then I go through the utility budget, so waste collection, water and sewer. And then I go through the general village operational budget thereafter, look at the budget drivers, and then we'll compare two thousand twenty four budget to two thousand twenty five. And then finally, the last section is just going over the capital investment for the capital plan, and then look at reserve balances. So that's, those are all the things we'll go through today. And let's start off with the draft rates and fees. And again, I'll emphasize, if you need myself again to emphasize, nothing, none of this is final yet. This is all this draft at this point. But I'm gonna go through, if, if nothing changes in the draft budget, this is what somebody could have been, could expect if you're a single family home. And these are the rates that you might see. Before I get into the rates, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what a single family home is. So your average single family home, property assessed value was three hundred and sixty-six thousand last year. They're multi-trommed, right?
Oh, no.
Yeah, I know. So your average single family home last year, based on B C property assessed values, was three hundred and sixty-six thousand. This year, property assessed values for two thousand twenty five for your single, average single family home is, is up about two point two percent to three hundred and seventy-four, just over three hundred and seventy-four thousand this year. That seems to be in line with the provincial average. I heard the province was around that two percent mark, so it seems to be in line with that. And so what this means is, for example, we'll, we'll go through the numbers in the top chart. So the municipal portion of property tax. So if you have an average single family home, so if your home value is around that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar mark, if we change nothing in the budget, it looks, it would be about a forty-six dollar annual increase in your municipal portion of your property tax. So that works out to about three hundred and eighty, or sorry, three dollars and eighty cents per month increase. For the waste collection, it'd be about fifteen dollar annual increase or a dollar twenty-five per month. Water, be about twenty-five dollars annual increase or two dollars and ten cents per month. And then wastewater or sewer is thirty-two dollar increase or two dollars and sixty-six cents per month. And so if you total up all of these utilities plus the municipal portion of the property tax, your average single family home could expect to pay about nine dollars and eighty-two cents more a month, or under eighteen dollars per year. Again, this is the spoiler alert. This is basically the last chapter of the book. The rest of the presentation talks about, okay, well, how do we get there? How do we get these numbers? So we can always flip back and refer to this page later as we go through things if we want, but we'll talk about how we get there in this presentation. So let's start off going one, one by one through the utility budgets. So the first one is garbage collection draft budget. And so this one's later. It's slightly different from the other one, just, this is just my worksheet. Expenses are on the top and revenue is on the bottom. And that's just simply because that's the order of operations which I do remember. We always look to find our, okay, well, what are the expenses? How much does it cost to create this service? And then we figure out what that amount is, and then we need revenues to match that essentially. And that's how we determine what the rate increases or decreases are gonna be. So in this case, for garbage collection, we anticipate our expenses are going to be a hundred and eight thousand dollars for the year, compared to about a hundred and four. And there are really two factors that drive this rate increase. We have a garbage collection service that we pay for, and there's an inflationary increase in that contract with them. So every year they increase the weight that they, that they charge us. And then the R D C K tipping fees factor into that too. So if there, there is a ten percent R D C K tipping fee increase, the garbage contract service provider adds that into their costs and forth passes that cost along to us. So as a result, that, that's why we, we do need an increase in garbage collection fees, just to cover those expenses. So when we look at those expenses and a modest capital component contribution, which is just for the spring cleanup days, fall cleanup days, when we use tools, if we use vehicles to get around the garbage, there's a little capital component. We, we use some capital assets to that. So when we factor that in as well, we need a hundred and eleven thousand dollars worth of revenue to basically break even, cover our costs and cover our capital expenditures. And that works out to a six point five percent rate increase, which is a dollar twenty-five per month. Or, sorry, I should say per, per year, a twenty dollars per year for your average single family home. Any questions about the collection piece for me? That was probably the most straightforward one out of any of them. The next one is the water utility draft budget. And so a little bit more involved here, but I'll kind of quickly go through how to read the budget. And then there's a second slide on it that, that we'll kind of jump to as well. So first off, revenue is at the top, so user fees. Two, those are the, well, user fees, the fees that we collect from everybody in the village who uses water, which is everybody. It's two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Then there's some interest in there, and then some connection fees in there. So the total revenue we're looking at is two hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine. That's what we would need for the utility. Our operation expenses, we're anticipating just under a hundred and sixty-four thousand in operation expenses. And that's up from a hundred and fifty-seven last year. So mo- moderate increase, around four percent increase. There's no operational changes. If this is just inflationary. When you look at, you know, parts, part supplies, contract services, we need to hire somebody to do that work, utilities, labor, all of those things are up year over year. So this is just an inflationary increase.
So I'm just gonna, instead of us wait until the very end, if you're okay, because there's a lot of information to that's packed in on these, these pages. Something that was brought up in the last meeting, and I don't know if any of you guys were here yet, was about the tariffs. What is our plan in here in this budget? If we get hit with stuff that we have to deal with on an emergency, do we have an emergency to pin something like this?
No, like, like an emergency contained within the budget to be able to spend.
We have.
Yeah, yeah. No, there isn't in the budget, so we have to do a budget amendment for that. Which is totally fine, but it has to come to council. So yeah, staff only has the authority to spend this amount, which is kind of normal business as usual. If an emergency comes up, we're coming to council to ask for money.
I, I just have a question about the N number.
Yeah, sure.
You know, it seems, you know, three hundred and six thousand kind of sounds like a lot of money, but it's totally nothing. Because I'm getting a generator for a little apartment, but maybe it's three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So if something should go terribly wrong.
Yeah.
Where, like.
Yeah.
That happens.
Great question. Let me, let me pop to the next slide because that speaks to that a little bit more. Before I do, I'll, we'll just stay on this slide for just a quick moment. I'll, I'll finish through it. But then I'll get your question in the next slide because it's illustrated there well, I think. So then after you go through your revenue expenses on here, you have your, your surplus essentially. So that's sixty-eight thousand one twenty-four. And so that, that surplus is basically your excess revenue, and that's basically what we're putting into reserves for if something does happen. Then you kind of go down. You don't have to go through the capital items right now because they are in a slide near the end. But then I kind of subtract all the capital or one-off expenditures that were planned for twenty twenty-five. There's a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And then that leads you to your net surplus or deficit. So in this case, we're putting sixty-eight thousand dollars into reserves, but we're taking a hundred and thirty-two out of reserves. So we have, we'll have a deficit of sixty-three thousand dollars. This is common. I mean, some years you have a surplus, some years you have a deficit. That's what a reserve is for, is to kind of smooth that out and balance that out. But we'll look at that a little bit more on the next slide because it's a bit more illustrative. Let me do that now.
Just a comment. I think we had, I mean, obviously there's some shifting possible with where this, this money comes from for these projects.
Yeah.
Like the water reservoir stuff we had talked about. What was the current, gas carbon? What was the?
Local government climate asset.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There could be some shifting.
Yeah.
So let's.
Reserves.
Yeah, let's do that. So I have one slide kind of near the end of the presentation that lists all the capital projects. And then I have kind of a, a possible funding source, but that's all up for debate, right? I mean, we can absolutely talk about all those and switch those, and you can direct staff to, to look for external grants, you know, all those things. So yeah, we will definitely have that conversation. Yeah. So I'll flip to the next slide, which is still on the water utility, but it's just more illustrative than, than the previous slide. So I find it a little bit more helpful. So as mentioned, right factors, I already kind of talked about the budget factors that, that go into the budget. But let's look at that chart on the top right, and, and I'll kind of walk you through that because this shows also Cox, your, the essence of your question. The blue bars show the reserve contribution again, so that's the money that you're putting in. So in two thousand and five, you'd be putting in that sixty-eight thousand that I talked about before on the last slide. But we're pulling out a much greater number, and that's the showing yellow. So a hundred and thirty-two thousand. And then the bar on the top, so this green bar, shows your, your estimated reserve balance. So as I kind of spoke about, you can, we can see in two thousand and twenty-four, we, we have a larger yellow bar than we do blue bar, which means our expenditures were greater than what we put in. The same for two thousand and twenty-five, we're spending, we're planning to spend more than we're putting in reserves. Two thousand and twenty-six, the same, slightly spending a little bit more than we're pulling out. That's okay for a certain period of time, but you can't do that forever. You will run out of money. So in two thousand and twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we're slowly starting to kind of rebuild that reserve. But if you notice, that blue line, or sorry, that green line on the top, that starting point kind of on this end, we're at about three hundred and twenty-two thousand today. But at the end of the five years, we're gonna have about two ninety-two, I believe that is. So even after this five-year budget, we're gonna have roughly the same amount as we have in there today. So this kind of leads down to the, I'll get to your question here. This kind of leads down to the bottom graph, that little pie chart. So what we're proposing is a seven percent increase in the water rates. Three point one percent of that is just for your operational inflationary costs. We need to cover our costs for inflation. But the remaining of that, that three point nine percent is to increase the contribution of reserves. And so that's how we prop up the reserves to not have three hundred thousand dollars in there and increase that four, five, six hundred thousand dollars if that's what we're thinking. So we, this doesn't get us to six hundred thousand dollars in five years. We have to increase rates significantly to get there. But this is a step in the right direction. As four percent, or four percent out of that seven percent is to increase those reserves, is to make sure that we're putting some money aside from those things. If council says that's not enough, we need to do more, by all means, we can do more. We will have to increase the weight to do so, but we can, we can definitely put more aside. My recommendation here is that, I keep repeating on this one I did last year too, is that asset management plan piece. That's a key component of this that we just don't have in the village yet, but that will really tell us where we need to be. Because these are just projections based on, you know, estimates and what we think we might spend in the future. But if we have an asset management plan, then we know what we're gonna spend in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-nine, twenty thirty-one, because we've kind of mapped all that out. And then if we map all that out, we know what our next fifteen years expenditures are gonna be. Yeah, give or take, there's always emergencies. Then we can really plan out, your capital investment needs to be X amount this year, X amount next year, X amount next year. Right now, we're just estimating. We're just trying to do better than we did in the past. But with that asset management plan, it will get us to the right place. So does that kind of answer your question?
It does. You know, I, maybe I'm just like kind of a wordy person, but when I think of inflation, I think of the cost that we had, say, seventy-nine thousand dollars in two thousand and four, and what that was gonna be worth by the time we're ready to spend it. We've probably already lost a large portion of our purchasing power and possibly even more than the four percent, in some, some cases, thirty and forty percent. So it almost seems like the strategy of saving money is almost at the point where it's a negative, and you have to start looking at other strategies to increase the values of some of these things.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, the only strategy, like, real lever that we have to pull to increase our reserves are water utility rates. I mean, there could be other sort of operational strategies on like maybe preserving assets to last longer. You know, those could be something that, that we'd look at from a financial perspective. The only real lever we have is rates and looking for grants. Those are the two sources of funding we have to replace these things.
And I want to say another lever that we have is doing a little bit of work each time instead of waiting for.
Yes, like somebody else.
Well, not always spending it all because we do need some of it, but, but to be able to, we have, we know once we have the asset management is, what is, we know that our water is looking at, we're bandaging it right now. And we know that we have a lot of leaks that we don't have the money to rip up our entire community unless we wanted to borrow five million dollars to do that. And I don't know if five million dollars would do it today. Cranbrook did it, I don't know, six years ago, and it cost them ten million dollars to do one little section, which is, was smaller than Samuel. So I'm wondering if that's one of our levers is, is that we have that list with that asset management that we're hoping that we get done this year. That we have that list that we can do this little bit this year, a little bit this year. And, and in that way, we don't get like an old city where it's a thirty-five percent increase in water because there was nothing done for multiple years and then.
Yeah, because it's huge, because no water means no sewer.
Yeah.
Right? Means a lot of no's.
No, I, I agree completely. That's, that's the power of the asset management plan.
Right.
Because you can map it out. And you, and if you have a five million dollar expenditure that you know is coming up in five years, then at least you can plan for it. You can plan, well, okay, if I big grant, can, do we have to stake out a loan? If we have to save it alone, there's gonna be a lot of interest to pay for it. So we better start increasing rates to cover all the interest charges that are gonna happen rather than just doing that fifty percent increase one year. Like, there's so many strategies that we can do if we have that forward looking. So, yeah, I mean, I've said it many times, but I can't stress enough the importance of that to set ourselves up for success in the future. I think what we're doing now with this budget, which we're just putting a little bit more and more away per your reserves, is getting us on track and getting us, you know, with, with the lack of information, getting us to the, to the right direction. Is that enough? I don't know. Without an asset management plan, I'm not sure. But at least it's, if we're on the right trajectory. Okay, let's move over to the sewer utility revenues. I might echo myself here because they're sparring on the same story, but there's a little bit of nuances here that are slightly, but. Anyways, the budget looks the same. I have a second slide that's kind of more illustrative, so I'll kind of walk through this relatively quickly. But what I'm proposing here, the five point five percent increase in the sewer budget. So that would bring the user fee revenue to six hundred, uh, sorry, three hundred and sixty-five thousand compared to what we budgeted last year, three forty-four. But I'm actually, this is a difference between this and the water. I'm actually decreasing the budget slightly compared to the last year, not much, it's less than one percent. Despite inflationary pressures and same increases with water, there is a little bit of room there that I found basically looking at trending data, which some of our expenses are actually trending down on. So in light of that, that makes up all the inflationary increases and then some, which allow us to lower the budget slightly this year. And so then that would give us a surplus of sixty, just under sixty-two thousand. So again, that's the money that we put into reserves. But again, we noticed we have about seventy-four thousand dollars worth of capital in one of our projects. So again, a little bit more projects than what we're putting in. So this is where I'll flip to the next slide because it's a little bit more illustrative, but we're staying on the same topic. So in this one, I'll refresh your memories if you remember from last year. So we came up with a bit of a plan last year because our sewer reserve was so low, we're in the teens, I believe, I think like thirteen, fifteen thousand dollars, just because we had a massive capital project that we were just finishing up. So it's understandable. We felt that, well, obviously fifteen thousand dollars in reserve is not enough, so we needed a plan to boost that up. And so what we decided last year was to leverage the Grown Communities Fund, which is a one-time big pool of money that the government gave us, to help prop up the reserves for sewer. So we'll be decided for year one, which is twenty twenty-four, a hundred percent of the capital projects would be funded by Grown Communities Fund. And then so all of our reserve contributions can actually go to the reserve rather than financing capital projects. In year two, twenty twenty-five, seventy-five percent of the capital expenditures would be paid for by Grown Communities Fund. And then the next year, fifty percent, then the next year, twenty-five percent, until we get to two thousand twenty-eight, which we're kind of self-funding our capital projects, so. So we're basically leveraging the Grown Communities Fund to get us to a better place in the cap waters. And so that can be seen in this chart kind of by that green line. So the green line is your reserve balance year over year. So as you can see, we're, we're going from a place, I know it's not on the chart, but last year we were around that thirteen or fifteen thousand up to, you know, we could potentially be around two hundred and fifty thousand by twenty twenty now. Again, this is just rough again without that asset management, but I don't know for sure, but it's just getting us back on track and building that reserve.
Yeah, it was thirteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
There you go.
That was what I was losing sleep.
Yeah, yeah, it was sweet love.
Yeah.
So looking at the little pie chart kind of on the bottom right there again, you, you know, you, you could easily ask, well, if you've lowered the budget this year for sewer, why is there an increase in rates? Well, in this case, all of the increase in rates is for the reserve contributions. I've got a little pie chart here. You can't have a negative number in a pie chart, but it seems to force it in there, so it did create a little slice of pie. But the, the operational component is like a negative point six. That means there's a decrease. And then basically just all of that increase is going to, to the reserve contributions to prop up the reserve. Any questions on this one? Again, kind of the same story as last time, but there's, this time we're leveraging the Grown Communities Fund. That's there. So that's it for the utilities. So now I'll briefly look at the, the village in its entirety draft operated budget. So the next slide is all numbers. We're not gonna talk with this, not gonna go through it because, but I wanted you to have it to. The subsequent slides are just a visual illustration of these exact numbers. It's just kind of easier to digest. But it's, it's the same numbers, same values, just in a graphical form. So we'll, we'll go through that instead. Okay, so page or slide fourteen here. So this provides the revenue again. So same information that was on the last slide, just in graphical form. And I'll explain this graph briefly. The blue bars, so the blue bars on the left are your twenty twenty-four budget. The green bars on the right are twenty twenty-five, so this year's budget. And so you can see the difference between this year and last year's budget essentially. The little red line indicates what our projected twenty twenty-four revenue will be at. Again, we haven't done year end yet, so these are, these are a little bit rough, but these are just our projections. So I'll kind of walk through some of these. So your taxes, so the bars on the left. The, the increase in the green bar, so the twenty twenty-five budget is simply just due to the, the tax increase. We're gonna earn more revenue in taxation to pay for the extra expenses through, through taxation. So that's just a tax increase there that I spoke about on the first slide. Sales of service, slight increase in sales of service. And that's just due to the waste collection. So we talked about the waste collection is more expensive, so we need to increase waste collection rates. That's all that's that difference there. Other revenue from own sources, so a slight decrease in revenue projected there. And that's simply just the difference in rental revenue from the one buildings of the hub. Yeah. So projecting just lower rental, yeah.
That was actually, it's pretty equal. We didn't get any from rent anyways, so.
We did know on a good time, but yeah, I think we got a couple payments there. So anyways, I, I put that out. Investment income just kind of look to be around the same. Unconditional grants, so this is your small communities grant, so a slight decrease in that one. And that is just because I don't know whether we're gonna be at reach of the province this time every year to ask them what it's gonna be. They haven't done their calculations yet. So I just budget based on what we received last year. That's kind of the safest bet. The thing about small communities grant, because, because it does fluctuate slightly from year to year, this directly applies pressure to tax rates because if we receive less from small community grant, that means we have to make up that difference in taxation. So there's a bit of pressure there for tax, unfortunately. I suspect we'll probably suspect we'll probably get around the same as we did last year because the, the property assessment values for the municipality are around on coverage with the B Cs, with the rest of the B C, so just we'll probably get around the same. Conditional grants, the reason there's a big spike in here, I just wanted to, to make note of this. This is because I'm just adding the Community Works Fund into this, and I will going forward. It doesn't make any difference in taxation because it's an in and out. We receive it, it goes into reserves. And historically, I just haven't included it, but I want to start including it just to show it as a reserve. So it looks kind of funny that you're like a big increase in conditional grants. In practical terms, there is no difference. I just didn't include it in the budget last year. In practical term, there is no difference. I just didn't include it in the budget last year. So now this is the expense side. So we'll go over a few of these. So general government expenses. Um, although it looks kind of flat on this far chart, it's actually a decrease again. I was able to look at trending data, um, and despite, despite, you know, property or insurance going up and, you know, all these little things going up, um, we're able to cut the budget slightly, point three percent. It's not a lot, but, um, it it is something. It's better than an increase. And we'll be relatively tight, but I'm sure that we can we can manage a budget there. Um, the reason why the red line is slightly above, I think I spoke to this in the quarter three report last year, just because there were some additional transition costs, um, for our C A O position. You know, we did spend a little bit more than anticipated, um, compared to budget last year in the administration expenses. But again, that was kind of one-off things. We don't anticipate that. We'll continue for this year. Um, protective services of a slight increase, um, for protective services, just based on again trending data. Um, last year we were under budget slightly, but if you look at the the few years prior to that, it looks like there's some trending data moving upwards. So just slight inflationary increase, roughly three percent. Transportation services is another one where we were able to, we'll get trending data and decrease the budget slightly. So around two percent decrease on that. Um, some of that is due to, uh, snow removal has been a lot less this last few years. So like you edging that down slightly. However, conscious that that can happen all of a sudden and we can have big snow years as well. So if you look at the little red line that your transportation services being under budget, that's basically what it was. Mostly due to snow clearing budget, having used all our budget for snow clearing.
In the transportation, um, would our street sweeper be under that?
Yes.
Okay.
Like the use of the street sweeper?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Our fifty-year-old street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
The broom? So it's the back way.
Actually, it should be a broom. The broom would probably work a lot better. Our street sweeper, I'm. Bet my volleys with the guy that sold it to us.
Okay.
Twenty-five years ago.
Okay. Um, waste collection, again, doesn't look too much different on the chart there, but, um, we talked about waste collection costs going up and and we need to increase our rates on that. So, um, very much well with that with the garbage slide at the beginning. Um, parks and recreation, um, again, a slight increase just based on historicals and inflation. That's roughly a four percent increase. Um, nothing more, just just trending data there.
Does that include? So when we're talking parks, um, so we get the money from R D C K that we put half in cruiser.
Yeah.
And the, uh, the two thousand dollars goes in that.
Correct.
Um, so so this is, is this, when we say parks, are we including like the two Ninth Street parks in them?
Yep.
So it's not just.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just lines and K V Park.
No, I don't believe so. If anything, we've spent on parks in there. Yeah.
Not that we do a lot on on those other parks, but.
Yeah. Um, and so the money from the R D C K, that half portion we put in reserves and half goes operations. So that has an effective decrease of the tax burden because we get that extra revenue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then again, interest expenses, it changed out of the equals of it last year. So. So again, I think the moral of the story on this budget, um, if there's, yeah, no operational changes, you know, no big staffing and restructures or reshuffle or anything like that. Uh, there's just some inflationary pressures, but we did really take it close. Like we did that this year. Like every year, look at trending information and where we can tighten things up and cut, you know, that we we always try to do that. The next slide kind of, uh, talks about contributions to reserves a little bit. We we talked about, you know, water sewer, um, reserves already, but this is just a visual illustration over what the contributions were over the last few years. Just so you can see the trending information as opposed to just what it was this year. Um, but as you can see, the water infrastructure reserve and to your point cast of COGS, like, we're we're striving to increase those reserve contributions to stay more current with inflating prices and the costs of things these days. So it's it's trending upwards. Same with the sewer infrastructure contributions to reserves. I mean, there's a steep increase there. And that's just to get us to a better place in our reserves. Fire department budget, um, same thing. We've increased those reserve contributions from about twenty thousand a few years ago to around fifty thousand. Um, and again, that's in preparation for some bigger purchases that we might have to maybe monetize in the fire trunk and and a lot of that stuff. So, um, you know, is this a thousand dollars enough? Well, we're not sure yet. We kind of kind of math those things out, but it's definitely in closer to the right number than twenty thousand dollars.
So I just want to go back to the water and sewer.
Yeah.
Um, when we stole from the sewer, from the water reserve.
Yep.
To help, um, pay for the the wastewater treatment plan.
Yep.
And when I say stole, we 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 have replaced that.
Yeah.
We borrowed it stolen. We borrowed from that reserve to help with that.
Yeah.
Was that where we at, if you can remember, were we at around three hundred thousand in the water reserve at that time?
Water or sewer?
Water, because we took from the water to help with the sewer.
And then we paid it back.
And we've been paying. That was the work that we paid back and we're still only at that.
Yeah, 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 that's right. It's totally paid back, I believe, in two thousand twenty-three or two thousand point two. I don't know. One of those years, that was the last payment. Yeah.
Okay, that's something totally off. We're not not on topic. Well, sort of, kind of. Um, thank you. What kind of grants can we apply if something terrible goes wrong? I guess I don't know.
For water?
Yeah.
There's nothing. That's the one thing for for, um, federal and provincial government is they've never put out water grants. They've, that's why when the sewer, the wastewater treatment come out and we applied for it and we got two point three million dollars or something like that, that was such a benefit for us because, you know, there's a lot of pocket that we're paying for Salmo. And we only ended up paying, I think, three hundred and fifty thousand or something like that in our, in the community. Um, but then we put in another two hundred and fifty thousand shortly after that because there was some stuff that was missed. But never anything in the water, um, meters is the first thing that's come out from the, and it's only because of the drug situations. They're like, oh, how do we, how do we start encouraging communities? Um, but with the election pending, I'm hoping that the federal government will go, oh, jeez, let's do water this time. Because that's what happened. It was right around election time when the sewer came out and we were ready, applied and got it. So I'm hoping that this time that there's something with water, but for whatever reason, the provincial and federal government do not normally put out water infrastructure grants. And that's a question for our M L A and our M and Bs because I'm not sure why.
I can, uh, I can speak to a bit on on the, um, what happens if there's an emergency. I'll I'll kind of flip to, um, one of the slides if I can find it. Slide twenty. So it's just our reserve balances. We can kind of jump to that. Um, that shows it's really small on the screen there. So, yeah. That shows the, the, all the reserves basically, um, are surplus and also some deferred revenue, which technically is an reserve like L G C A. Um, but this, if you look at the surplus, which is all the way on the left, is that are the biggest bars. So that is something that's in a, in an emergency, if you can't find grant funding and all that kind of stuff, the surplus tends to be used for those expenditures. So the surplus is accumulated over long periods of time, just whenever we budget, say we budget a hundred dollars, but we only spend ninety dollars. That difference, ten dollars, goes into operational surplus year after year. It's accumulated. You know, I don't want to, you know, bank on these things. Yeah, let's use it all because it takes like decades to build that up. But in an emergency situation, if you have no other funding source, like it certainly is something that you drop. It's a, um, besides from all the other ones, grown communities funds, we kind of be remarked that for to drop off the sewer reserves, like I was saying before. But if something were to happen tomorrow and we need to shift strategies, I mean, there's there's some funds that grown communities funds, but I don't know. So, um, the reserves aren't the only place where we can drop from sometimes gas taxes and other, um, community works fund. Right? So like, there are some other opportunities. Genu- generally, you like to use the reserves for those purchases because those are fee-based. Um, but yeah, there are are other opportunities. Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, that's, um, here we get aside from the capital budget, um, the capital expenditure. So all that stuff is operational. Um, before we get to the capital stuff, can you have any questions on anything that we went over so far, I guess? But we heard contributions, our operations are.
I'm just wondering if, because this is utilities basically.
Yeah.
If we can open it up.
Sure.
Is everybody okay with doing that, is opening up the town, town for me there? Are you okay with opening that up?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So this is the over the utility that we talked about, not on the entire budget right now. Um, and so right now, there's just a small portion of the picture that everybody has heard and seen. Um, I don't know if there's anybody else online.
There's, uh, there's everybody on the right. Yeah, we have.
So S H and Andrew. Okay. Would you like to start, Tom?
Yes, um, I am here to, or similar to, uh, I own with my husband, it's just the two of us. We own a cell crescent town here in Salmo.
Good.
And as the years, we've been here for eight and a half years. And we can see the increases. We have an eleven unit motel. And the problem is, is we're only running at about thirty-eight percent capacity, but we keep getting these increases. And it's really, really tough. It is Salmo. We're not getting a lot of people coming through. Times are changing. Airbnbs are taking, uh, away some of our business. And you're talking about these increases so that you can have money going into reserves, which I get. But what about the business owners that are trying to make a go of it in slow times, in trying times? That's really hard to swallow. Like I'm paying a K P five hundred dollars for bills coming into this. And it's just going to keep, it just keeps going and going and going. I don't mind getting increases, but I feel like we're being gouged for eleven units when we're not unfortunately able to have all eleven units built in a year, every day. So those are my concerns because it's getting to the point where if our expenses just keep going up, we'll have to shut the doors. So I understand what you guys are saying, but I'm on the other end of it. Having a heck of a time trying to justify these these prices. So I don't know what can be done, but it's been a something that we've been really having a hard time struggling with year after year. And this is my first time coming just to try and finally, I've had meeting already, but Daniel and I last year, and we're just trying to have it in your head that I see your picture, but it's coming out of our pocket that is also already a scrub. So that's why I'm here.
I'm, I thank you for coming. I think like, you know, the the best things you can do is that meditation, it's right, just to see where the movement is going and, you know, see what we're presenting in here. You can agree with it or not agree with it, but I think coming out and and posting their opinion and seeing how this whole process works. Um, I appreciate that. I'm sure Terrell does as well. I think that's a really important.
Yeah, it's really tough because I feel like we're getting gouged. I understand because we have eleven units, so that's how it's based on what we get charged. I get that. But it's not reality for us. And we've been choking on this for eight and a half years and it just keeps going higher and higher and higher. And then we have all of our other expenses. So that's what makes it really, really tough.
Is there a way to challenge that? There is. Probably not. I think it's very challenged what, challenge what the cost is like if if they're not actually using the facility or they they've decided to cut off two apartments, does it matter?
Yeah, I I'm not sure. I I think ultimately, you know, the the figures that we talk about here are ultimately what the village needs to raise to to comply with the plan. How that's distributed certainly can be discussed. So I mean, if one individual or one business, you know, if we cut theirs in half, we just have to raise everybody else into the same amount. It might be so, I'll just confirm somewhere, but two questions that are processed to to challenge it. I don't.
See, because we don't do monthly, so we don't have people. People are coming through in the afternoon or early evening. They spend the night, they really have a shower, they flush in the toilet a couple of times a night, whatever, and then they're gone the next morning. So it's not like an apartment or places where people are coming in and spending all day and all night. I mean, that's a different story, but we're not getting that. And like I said, we're not even close to fifty percent capacity, not even close.
So you don't ever rent by monthly?
No, we don't.
Because I thought of our, one of our C A Os rented by monthly.
We make an exception and it was only for a certain person because it was here, but other than that, we find out it's a new headache. And you don't, it's just we've had rooms that have been wrecked and so we just don't do long-term rentals unless it's just the right circumstance. And even then, there were persons. We don't, uh, cater to people that are just looking for a monthly that's going to come in there and spend all day and all night because our our rooms are small, so they get wrecked. Then we, it's money out of our pocket, another expense that we have to deal with because we've already been there and done that. So that's why we are the way we are now. It's like, it's just a short term, come in and leave and unrest is somebody that's coming in and going to work all day long. So they're not there. They come in at night, so it's no different than a person checking in for the night.
I'm gonna ask, would you see that there's a possibility of if we get this grant for the water meters that they could, if if that's happening, that there could be, see that there would be a decrease in a bill?
Yeah.
If there's not that much usage?
Yeah, I mean, we we certainly could get like, I guess, maybe the first question would be, if we get the grant for the meters, would you charge that still flat rate or would you charge immediately?
Start off with a flattery.
Yes.
You can't just, you have to. We we are to have, as I, as I, when I was speaking with Shelley today, use the school bus as an example. You have one kid on the school bus or twenty kids on the school bus. You still got to run the school bus.
Yeah.
So you still have to have a certain amount to run.
Yeah.
And and then it's the usage
Yeah.
of the water, which ends up going into the sewer.
Yeah.
Um, would our, would, could somebody see a decrease in a bill in that sense?
Not in the current level of the urban structure or anything, but I mean, but if you, yeah, if we were to, I mean, not, we come up with a different creative system where it is based on usage, then you could devise a new mechanism. Um, that's certainly possible. I mean, we can certainly be creative. Um, the the other thing I would say though, on, um, a lot of the costs for sewer and water isn't, you know, necessarily the usage cost, right? It's not the much water to drink or water to use. It's the infrastructure cost of the ground, right? So it's, um, that's mostly what we're paying for, right?
But a big chunk of that's coming out of my pocket more than it is other people's pockets. And we've had a fifty-two percent increase since we moved here in our, in our, in our sewer alone. I mean, the the water is like, okay, I can understand that the water increases, but that's a huge increase in sewer.
Mm-hmm.
And so I can see, you know, I understand the increases for everybody and my home. I understand all of that.
Yeah.
But what I just can't justify is what we're getting charged at the motel. Because it's not the same for everybody, right? So that's, that's my, my, my voice here, but.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Well, businesses are important for you. In Salmo, we lose our businesses and it's a problem.
Yeah. Um, I I guess, um, you know, I can't speak to individual businesses today, but I think in regards to our plan and strategy that results in these increases, so you mentioned sewers, thus I think that was the five point five percent increase for sewer. Um, the reason for that increase is we've had illustrated here is because our reserve balances are not sufficient. And so we we absolutely need to charge more to prop up those reserves for use because if we do need to replace some of the assets, we wouldn't have the funds to do that without the reserve.
Maybe I was taking out of some other funds. One of these reserves that you had, you said, don't you say that you have some money sitting out in front of you?
In an emergency situation, but generally, if you're replacing infrastructure for. In an emergency situation, but generally, if you're replacing infrastructure for sewer, for example, that shouldn't be paid by tax dollars. That's paid for sewer feeds. So they're kind of isolated in their in an emergency situation, sure, you can go apply for grants or you can get these growing communities funds or something like that.
Didn't you say you got a grant from the government for two point two nine dollars? So I was just gonna explain something. So what we did is when we got the grant for the wastewater treatment plant of two point three million or whatever it was, um we had, I think we had to spend four hundred thousand dollars. And because we had a healthy reserve in our water, what we did is because it ended up going over time is we borrowed out of our water reserve, but not you can't just borrow out of it and not pay it back. It's in that water reserve and we put it into to pay for the sewer. So the taxing and and maybe that was wrong on our behalf is maybe we should have just left it at taxation. But we were trying to ease it for the public. And and then what what we had to do is we had to slowly, what we did is slowly pay it back to that reserve to build that reserve back to where it was. You can't just take out the money and use it somewhere else. You have to pay it back. So uh the difference between a municipality and a regional district is you can't do that. You can't use somebody else's some other services reserve. Where in a municipality, we can use a reserve, but we must pay it back. So it's to be able to make sure that that the community doesn't all of a sudden, oh, my gosh, we're charging twenty five percent because we need to pay for this. So that's and and maybe that was wrong on the council that made that choice to do that. Maybe we should have just said, no, we're taking out a loan of four hundred thousand dollars and we're gonna do it that way. But we felt that it was easier on the 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 community as a whole to do it that way. So it was a more easier transition of dollars. And now, as as the CFO said, is that we've paid that total back to the water reserve. And if we had an emergency again, and there was another, as far as our water or sewer reserve is only at like sixty thousand dollars or something, that scares the heck out of me because one, one thing can be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we would have to, again, borrow from another reserve, but we would have to pay it back.
And did you say then that if you put in water meters and it showed that we were using a lot less and we're gonna, but you can never lower the bill? So if I was using less water, then wouldn't my sewer bill come down? And didn't you just say that it's in the bylaw that you can't lower bills?
The the way that the bylaws now is they're they're fixed rates. So if if we were putting in, you know, go through this project and get meters on every building, then it's up to council and staff to decide what they want to do with that, whether they want a bill still flat rate, which they can, like the bylaw states now, or if they want a variable basis usage, that's totally up to council.
He's just saying we have to change the bylaw.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, the bylaw right now wasn't set up.
To do that.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that would be work on council. Council would have to do that in order, but we have to get the grant first before we even look at bylaws. So. Yeah, yeah. Is any more?
I think I pretty much just had to come down here just to base my concerns.
And is anything similar?
Yes, like I said, if this keeps going the way it's going and the Airbnb's get charged.
Oh, yes.
I sure hope they do, seeing as they're taking our business away from us. There's times to change.
Can you tell me which one it would be? So it's the same. It's exactly the same as hotels, motels and B and Bs per unit is two hundred forty six dollars and forty nine cents. Per unit. So if it's a house with a, like, the one that was the dragonfly, they would pay the the residential rate of two ninety eighty one, and then they would pay two forty six next door. For and I'm using that one as an example. I have no idea if they're, if we have any more than that one in Salmo. Oh, okay. I I don't know. I don't stay in any airbnbs in Salmo.
And that's why it's hard to take because we've had people leave our motel to go stay at the Airbnb. And because our rates and our expenses are so high, we've already had to raise our increases of our rates over the years since we've been here, which is a really tough thing to do because still, this is just Salmo. People, this is not a big place. And if you can't attract the business, the people to come here and stay here and spend the money, then how do you get your money? So now what's happening is we've raised our increase, our our rates. And now we've had to go back down to where we were about four years ago, just to try and maybe get somebody to stay here. And then you see them leave, maybe stay one night, and then they're gonna go into the Airbnb and I can't compete with them. Our overhead and what we have are expensive, even if my hotel is empty, is like a hundred thousand dollars a year, empty. And then they got theirs down the road and that's where they're going. So it's just tough. Like, it's really tough.
Hmm hmm. Yeah, I I hear what you're saying is is how do we attract more for our businesses? And that's economic development.
The rates, you know, in these trying times, right? That's what I'm trying to get at because you're just you're taking my extra money and you're putting in your reserves, which I understand has to be there. But it's maybe that maybe that's too much at this time until things pick up. I mean, there's so many unknown things with everything happening in our country, in our country, right? Well, they're all struggling with money. People aren't moving. They're not traveling around. Like, it's just different times.
I I can say one thing, and this is just that on a joke basis. We did try to cut things down. We shut down one racetrack and we had a whole community of Salmo upset because it stuck. So we got that racetrack going with another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, you know, like, yeah, I I hear what you're saying. Um it it is tough when when people are trying to make a go of it in a business and we're in a small community. I've been a business person most of my life in this community, so I know exactly where you're going with it. Um.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, or I, you know, and I hear you as well, like, it is it is challenging. And and the cost of everything's going out for everybody, you know, personally in business and like stuff. And it is a challenge for for folks. Um I guess just on the on the big picture again of your business specific, you know, the the big reasons, especially with the sewer, the reserve, um or the increases are just the 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 lower reserves. Like, we we can't really sit back and and not take action. We we need those reserves to give us safe place for everybody, just in case something does happen when you replace assets. You know, it is something that, you know, wouldn't be prudent. Um wouldn't be prudent if we didn't do it, to be negative, but it doesn't.
Our responsibility.
It's our it's our responsibility to be prepared to have reserves in place should something happen or just to replace assets. Because they do break, you know, you have assets that were, you know, kind of hanging on to that that need to be replaced. That's what the reserve is for is, but it is an important part of editing this, making this more budget, so.
Pretty much what's gonna happen here is everything's just gonna keep going up and up and up unless you get meters. And that's the only chance of anything ever possibly changing for us. Other than that, we're just gonna keep seeing these increases every year, year after year after year.
I think.
We're never not, anybody is never not gonna see an increase.
I understand that, but I'm just like for our situation.
Yeah.
For our motel, for us.
I can't speak to you to you business specific.
Does anything that can ever be done at all? Anybody looks at anything and just anything to try and figure out a solution to our problem?
I I think like last year, we did have the conversation of, it was mentioned about our policy on how we charge um different businesses and there was a discussion about looking at that in the future. So I think that is how you would definitely buy plans and repeat if we were to bring that forward and we evaluate how we charge per unit. Um.
And that would be as as Nathan said, or the CFO said, is that when we take away from one, then we and and that's the only way of doing it is when when you start decreasing one, then you must put it on others, right? So so um as I've used before is that grandma down the street is paying more per than your unit, one unit.
I will I will pay more out of my house expenses in water and sewer if I was to get less in my motel. I don't have a problem paying increases. But what I do have a problem is with paying the increases that I'm getting for a motel that's sitting empty.
I I I understand that, but as I've said before, is that there's no way of us controlling if your units are filled three hundred and sixty five days or a hundred and fifty days in a year. Like, there's no way of us controlling, meaning the village, controlling that. We 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 have no way of having any in um influence or.
I understand that, but I do like your idea about at least bringing up. Oh, sure, that's the end of the city. Maybe look at how you're you're coming up with the prices per unit.
And that's in, we have have discussed that, but we can't do it until we have asset management. Excuse me, I got this tickle in there, so I'm gonna go wait. So once we have asset management, that will help, that will help every future council going forward to know, right now, we know that our fire truck is gonna be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we know that we need to have that by twenty thirty. That is as far of asset management that we have, and we're not even close. We've got fifty thousand dollars in the bank over that. So if our fire truck died tomorrow, we'd be borrowing seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now, which taxes would be going, right? So that's, once we have the asset management, it will help this council and every council going forward so much more. And it's unfortunate that our council didn't do this ten years ago. But there's lots of councils that don't have asset management and 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 just trying, because it's a big project put together. And we have it in the budget, so to be able to do it this year. So hopefully, when we get to next year at this time, that we have a better idea. And who knows, maybe our asset management tells us that we're way behind or that we're way ahead or we're doing just the right amount. We won't know that until. Um I'm hoping that it tells us that we're way ahead of the game, but I'm pretty sure that we're not. Uh but if that makes a better, um and asset management, I don't know if you're understand what that is. But that will tell us the age of our pipes in our in the ground, um the life of them. We know all of our water in our entire community is at end of life. We know our reserve reservoir is at end of life, our water lines coming down are at end of life. And that's just our water. Our sewer lines are the same way in our community. Um we know what our asset is for wastewater because we've just done it. So we are ahead of the game in doing that and we're ahead of the game because we've already paid so much. And we've we're lucky enough to get uh that grant to be able to help that. So going forward, we won't know anything until we have that very clear picture. And and those are just three little things. That's not our sidewalks, our parks, our roadways, because we're responsible for all of that, too. Um. And, yeah, there's, we might, but we definitely will be looking at all of it, including how does a business get? Um how do we attract business to be able to have more people bring business to town? To so more people will move to town. You know, we don't have a lot of people building in our community, too. Um, yeah.
I agree. Need to grow this town, you know, have people have things here, have businesses here. There's lots of businesses here. We don't even know what they all are, you know, so that is one thing. There's just has to be a lot of signboard. But, yeah, that the only way I can see things working is getting growth.
Hmm.
But we have to have businesses that stay open in order to have growth. So people can stay and have things to do here in places that games and, you know what I mean? So let's.
Yeah.
I agree about the start of the race.
More business, more competitions is good for a community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My thank you all for your time. Thank you. I just come on your bad, my my.
That's okay. Do you have any questions on the utilities? No. Um speaking Andrew, do you have any questions on the utility so far? No, what about S H? Okay, let's move on. Thank you very much. Yes, at the beginning. Okay, thank you.
Um so the the last slide is just the capital use. And so um it's pretty small on your screen, but you know, in front of you. So this is again, the whole presentation is just a discussion, you know, first budget presentation. So this is what, you know, staffs put together is the capital type of census for this year and some potential funding sources. Um but if you guys have suggestions, wanna help finalize, wanna take some off, put some on, this is what the discussions all about.
If I may, through the chair, three should council discuss the public workshop enclosure and we decided that was not a good idea. Um I would still like to keep that off of the list.
Mine's highlighted.
Okay, yeah, I can I can certainly, if that's the desire, can certainly.
Um I can tell you, just so everybody has a refresher, is this building. Um the one of the reasons that they wanted to enclose it is to store the water tanker uh because it needs to be indoors in the wintertime. And that water tanker is not used within the village. It's always used outside of the village. And so if we're going to do something that we're housing something, um then that money needs to come from area G to pay for that. So that's where that's going. Anybody else have anything else before I?
Sure, I'm lots of. Please do, because like, what what I need the feedback, so when I come back for the kind of final budget, I know what to include, but I don't, so.
There are a couple of these, uh the minor ones in particular, um like the picnic tables um that can be through grants that are coming on being that reach that is further down the budget as far as special interest.
I can change, I can change.
Yeah, we can, you and I will, I'm sure, talk some more. That's it.
If I may, through the chair, I'm not sure if this is a budget question, but for the hot building repair maintenance, because we were just, we see the building, is it our responsibility to repair that building or is it imperious?
Um that convers- I I guess, because well, that conversation I would much rather have uh in a closed session because it's to do with the contract itself, but um.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
So you can put a question mark beside that one?
Okay, okay.
Um and and yeah, because there's there's uh some in camera information that needs to um come. But that that had to be in the budget, so we're aware of it, um but there is more. Um I have a question about, we have village funded at seventy eight percent and grant funded at twenty two percent. Normally, when we see a budget, those numbers are reversed. Can you tell me why we're, we have flipped? In that, we're normally grant funded at seventy, between seventy and eighty percent?
Yeah, I I I agree, you know, I think it is usually kind of the other way around, like sixty thirty uh external grant funding. Um I don't really have any answers for that, but maybe the C A O does, I'm not sure. Like, because we haven't really worked through, I guess, what's grant, might be some external grants.
Yeah, like, there's some things in here that I know that we can use for LG cap funding and things like that. It's just more, um there are, I guess, through these conversations, I I did want to have the um a further talk about the grant funding and specifically for the allocations that we have. Because I know we just had brought up the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three LG cap. We're now using twenty twenty four for something. If it's not reserves, it can be used for something, you know, one of some of these projects. Um it's just now what the direction is, is that generally, this is, this is probably the most aggressive away from the grants as far as the draft. And then every everything going towards it will get better, um as Nathan and I have. Um.
Okay, so then can I just, can we just start from the top and go through each one?
Yeah, sure. Okay, because because, yeah, on the grant thing, yeah, it'd be good to know because if, you know, there might be situations where council says no to it if it's reserved funded, right? And yes to it if it's grant funded.
If if I may, supplementary to that comment, the first six, not including the hundred thousand dollars for the.
If, if I may, supplementary to that comment, the first six, not including the hundred thousand dollars for the KP concession, if they come out of reserves, the park reserve is zero. So, if we're doing priorities, those top.
But I, I think we need to hear what these capital projects are.
Okay.
So, picnic tables, you said, are for what?
Um, that's part of our loss prevention, actually, um, to, um, for our M I B C, it was to repair or replace the picnic tables. Um, so, but there are, um, accessible grants that we can get accessible picnic tables for. So, that was first one that we can pretty much get grant funded, that we wouldn't have to take out of reserve. Um.
If that's M I B C, don't they have that fund to use? Or you don't, or if you can get a grant?
I can get, I can get the grant, and that's kind of rooming for that one.
Okay, practice more.
Um, that one is, it's just your equipment, it's for the, the pole behind the tractor, um, that attachment, um. It's not riding lawnmowers. So, if I may through the chair, I know we've discussed this a few times about, um, staff and their use of that specific piece of equipment.
Okay.
In the park and repeatedly damaging it and breaking it. Um, so I think if we're gonna spend five thousand dollars on a trackless, they need to be trained properly and how to use this.
But, um, i- i- that's what I'm wondering, is, we're not spent, we're not buying a trackless form for five thousand dollars?
That's just the attachment, it's not an actual.
But the atta, what is this attachment, like, do we have it, or are we buying a new one? Is it replaced?
It's replacing.
We have?
Replacing.
And what is wrong with the one that we have?
It's just a little, and worn out. Um, again, our asset management plan, thi- this is what I would say, I guess, if I wanted to put a blank comment on this budget, I wouldn't buy a piece of equipment or build anything to do with a building until that is done. And so, it, it's, and it's on here, in the idea that we, the public works, this is one of their asks, um, through the staff. But so, but supplementary, that's it, we've asked Civic Works to give us a list of their equipment, and, uh, the, and I advise, but they need, they've never done that, they just keep throwing stuff into budgets and sending us notes that we need this piece of equipment, this piece of equipment, we've asked them to give us a list, so. No, and, and that, I share your frustration, because I, I, I need to see that list as, as equal as you, because, uh, you know, I, I, you know, when we were having the conversation about the L, LG cap, and the first suggestion was a truck, and like, don't say truck. And then they just said, well, we need a truck, and it's like, anything but a truck, council's gonna rip that apart, because it's an equipment and it's of the most that vain pieces of equipment we can have, don't make that your first one. And again, um, this is where I would prefer that list as well, um, to be honest. And part of that's because I'm apparently new, so I'm not, don't really have a good idea of where everything is at as far as.
Okay, so, we obviously know what the KP concession, don't know if it can even be used this year. Um, writing more is another thing, I'm not sure what that is for forty-five hundred.
That's just a new lawnmower. It's not, we don't, uh, um, we don't buy the, the industrial ones, uh, we buy the residential ones, which is why it's forty-five hundred and not fifty thousand, because the industrial ones that most municipalities use for parks are the heavier duty, so they do have a longer shelf life, but they're also a price, the price. Um, there are grants available, um, or there were grants available for like electric lawnmowers, um, through the municipal green fund. I don't know if those are still available, um, I have to do a bit more catching up on my grants, to be frank, but.
So, I would like to see that, um, because that is one piece of equipment that bounces down the road quite fast and breaks, gets broken quite often, um, because of the excess driving. So, and, and I realize that's only ninety-five hundred dollars, although it seems to be ninety-five hundred dollars every year.
Um, if, if we spent fifteen on an industrial, that was more robust and could do the job, both those pieces of equipment together. It only makes sense to purchase the proper piece of equipment. Absolutely, and this is where our asset management plan is coming in, because it's really more like, like we were talking as far as where the pickup conversation has, is that, well, which piece of equipment do we buy new, which one do we buy five years old, which one do we buy three years old, and figure out how that puzzle piece works, right, and this is part of it, so.
The hand dryer at KP Park, um, I realize it's, that's only two thousand dollars, although we've had so much vandalism, um, down at that park, just with our toilets, and we don't seem to get away from that. I'm really concerned about putting a hand dryer in there, that's just gonna get ripped off the wall. What we can't, um, yeah. Like, what do we, what do we spend on paper towel? And washroom, I don't think it's probably two thousand. I just think that we need to, like, decrease the vandalism somehow. Uh, and I don't know how we do that, other than move some children out of town, um. I, I just, I, I, I hate throwing money at something, just, just, if we can get it through a grant, then I'm all for the two thousand, through the accessible grant, but I'm not, uh, and I don't know how you guys feel, but I'm not willing, I'm not gonna say yes to the two thousand if we're just gonna put it there with the, because that's, that says, um, hair dryer, doesn't say two, so one gets it and one washer gets it.
We did one last.
Yeah. So, we're putting one in the other bathroom this year, and then we're gonna do the lions the next, like, I don't know, I don't know. I think we just need to have a, a clearer picture of what's happening.
Sorry, can I go back up?
Yep.
Just so I need clarity, because when I come back, I'll to take away or add in what you ask, what are the trackless mower and writing mower? Did, did we come to conclusion there, or are you just gonna, gonna go back to us to figure it out?
Yeah, I think that, that Derek was gonna look into, what is it? For industrial.
Okay, okay.
And it will, an industrial, like, I don't know what it is with a trackless mower, because it just says trackless mower, um, that what, if it's an apparatus, um, buying an industrial mower.
Okay.
Does it have the same ability with having that apparatus, because I don't know what the apparatus is.
Also, I'd like to, like, just affirmation, put it back to us, and it'd be good to know, like, are these functional? Are they just wanting to replace for something higher quality that's gonna last longer, or are these currently not usable?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, like, one thing, you know, we've done talked about it this year, um, today all night, but and maybe we can come to the table with this, but would it be helpful if there was just like a one-pager for each of these asks, kind of? Basically, with a brief description of what and why?
Yeah, yes and no?
Yeah.
That'd be a pretty big package.
Well, no, we can put a bunch of them on one page.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, they're pretty brief, like, I started out with Anne when she was here, it's just like a one-pager, here's the ask, thousand dollars, and here's why we need it, I think it would help us, but yeah, we would have a lead nation. So, always looking at.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, you could still ask questions, but you have fundamental information. So, yeah, maybe we could do that for the next, it's the next meeting, or, or if we don't need to do that this year, we definitely do that next year, I guess.
So, we'll go on to the, um, aerators, um. I guess, my question that I have is, we seem to have constantly, um, putting significant enough money at wastewater treatment plant, still, when we've been told multiple times that, oh, we just need to do this, and we just need to do that. Why are we doing aerators now?
Um, the, the, the aerators are, are just to, so that we, uh, it keeps the maintenance costs down. Is it so yet that we can clean it less often? If I may through the chair, is this for the not refurbished racetrack? So, the other, the track that's always been running, not going to just fix? Because I know we play raters in the new track.
Yeah, yeah, these, yeah, these, these would be the remainder.
So, for the other?
Yeah, yes, yes, to close everything off, um. Was, yeah, tha- that's how I was explained, is that this is another half of it, I, I, again, not, not really knowing a whole bunch of, like, forgive me for this, but yeah, this is something that, um, I'll, I'll look into, because, uh, yeah, um, it was, uh, I, you know, got a couple definitions on what everything meant this morning, but, um, still, yeah, very humbling, because I'm pretty sure, because I was, excuse me, sorry to interrupt, I don't need to share. The last areas, I think, were close to thirty thousand dollars for that set of that truck. So, the ten thousand dollar, it kind of hasn't been questioning what it is. Um, yeah, so definitely, information coming back would be good.
And I'm wondering if we could direct staff to, uh, give us, um, for the wastewater treatment plant, the work that's been done and the work that needs to be done. So, we have a goal of where we're going, because I feel, I feel myself is that I'm chasing my tail, because there's always something on here, and I'm like, so, didn't we do this? And we may not have done it, but it was in a budget to do it, uh, under, that we would look for a grant or something like that. So, for clearer for us, is it, and everybody going forward, is if we have, this is the work that we did when we got the grant, the big grant, this is the work that we did, that we put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, this is, um, um, all of that. And then it's a, a living document within the village office, and it doesn't matter who looks at it.
Absolutely. And I think, uh, adding that kind of stuff for the wells would be a good idea, you said, I'm not gonna be doing a lot of work moving forward on the wells to try and keep them from burning, like, generally, here's, break, can be repaired. So, yeah, I think with our assets coming, going forward like that, I mean, that's a great idea to have a in detail, that's the line, I don't tell you that, what you need to do.
Well, so then I feel for our asset management, huh?
Yeah.
No, absolutely, and, and, I mean, they, they have this in Alberta, and they call it a capital plan, and so then what it does is that you set, it, it stretches out ten years in the past and ten years in the future, so that you can see all of your assets and what was done and budgeted when, and it's, it's actually, it's the catch, yeah, so, yeah, to be honest, but.
So, um, so, yeah, if that, that aerator, if it needs to be done, then it needs to be done, but, um, um, I just hate using reserve for that. That's, that's not good when we're trying to build up that sewer reserve, because that sewer reserve is way too low, right? And we're only sitting at sixty-one thousand dollars in this sewer reserve? Um, so is there any other place that we can take that out of, if we need to take that out?
Um, well, you could use grant communities funds for that, because, I mean, for, for the sewer, we were using seventy-five percent of all, um, sewer purchases, capital purchases, seventy-five percent of that would come out of the grant communities fund anyway.
Okay.
Because that was kind of our five, four, five-year plan, so that would be partial grant communities. Yeah, grant communities fund, plus reserves for the twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, if we could just, yeah, it take that, and then, um, the sledge pump steel replacement, like, like, why would that have been done? You know, and then we're down to the harmonic upgrade, um, why would that have been done? Like, we have a, a refurbished thing, so I, I don't know what the harmonic upgrade is. I'm, I know that we've this, we've talked about it before, um, so I don't know if it just was on again, on a.
Yeah. I can explain what it is, I guess, so what happens is that all, in our utility room for our wastewater treatment plant, there is so much machinery going, that it actually caught, like, there's an electricity current that runs through the building. What happens is it's kicking things out, because there's too much water in the room. So, what this harmonic upgrade does is it drops that reverberation of the electricity, so that everything in your building runs. So, we tried, uh, they tried to, um, our electrician tried the first step that was planned, um, for the fix, it didn't work. As part of the plan, there's a second step, that should close it off, if it doesn't. Um, this was something that we had an engineering report ready, engineering, uh, looked at this for us. They said right in their engineering report, we're not sure if this will work, we're pretty sure this is what it is. So, now, our plan B is this harmonic upgrade is the second part of that. If it doesn't work, then I'm gonna be talking with the electrician, but from my understanding is, is that the next step is that we build a twin building right beside it and put half of the electrical stuff in there and have a second utility room. And that's the only way that we can get everything working, because there's just too much electrical interference in that room. And then it's starting to, uh, like, our aerators are being run on a battery right now. Um, because it, it just keeps on kicking everything out, it's affecting our skater system, which is our alarms, all of that, it's throwing everything in that room out of the black, so, a- and I don't know how, I, I'm not an engineer or an electrician, I don't find it been built that way, but, or if this was just.
But that's what's slightly by, uh, Max and Fred this morning.
Okay, first officer. We've been dealing with this wastewater treatment plant for a long time. Is there any way we can take action against the engineers who initially designed and built this and pulled the tube over our eyes and basically wasted two and a half million dollars, because we're gonna be getting a million dollars by the time this is all said and done, out of our pockets after the grant, and we still compete up to operate?
What I can do is, I guess, I would look into those original documents for that grant application and see.
No, please, your time, I can tell you that there wasn't a contract signed, we know that. There was not a contract signed, we cannot go back on them, that is, that is history, we're just gonna have to.
Yeah, I guess.
Move forward.
Move forward, okay. Okay, let's, um, plow truck, um, so, when we were talking about, now, this is the belly plow truck, is that what we're talking about, to make sure we're talking about the right plow truck?
Yeah, the one with, with the blades on the belly and.
On the belly?
Yeah.
Um, so, we just spent a bunch of money on fixing this. And now, we want to buy another one?
Yeah, the problem is, is we're at a point where we're chasing good money after that, our, our, it's a nineteen ninety-two truck, so everything's just starting to go, and it's a piece, ten grand at a time.
Okay, so, we talked about you being able to use LG cap money. And they said, as long as it was.
Well, they didn't say too many parameters, but it depends, if it's a newer truck with lower emissions, then, yeah, then it would qualify. But for six to five thousand, I think we're thinking a used truck, correct? So. Yeah, so I guess what I would probably propose is if you have a truck spec in mind, we could send that to the provincial government and get approval, because that would probably be pretty great, I think if it was brand new, it definitely made a case for it, a couple of years old. But if it's like, come on, you know, fifteen years old, I would probably feel safer sending it to the M I C government for, before we spend that on LG cap.
Well, I would, I would hope that we'd be closer to two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, I'd say twenty twelve is when the, from the D F emission systems, so, anything.
Yeah. So, if I had that type of information, I can definitely, like, go back and say, hey, this is when the E Fs were put in, you know, with this whole fire and LG cap.
Yeah, we can definitely find something like that, with something that we just pulled off of a listing at sixty-five, yeah, as far as just an issue. Yeah, there wasn't anything really specific in mind, but it was a twenty sixteen, um, so.
It was a twenty sixteen?
Yeah, but, um, unfortunately, like, that listing is not already, so, so, that's the game with buying used is.
So, I guess, but, but, but something like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Send the spec sheet, just have that.
Yeah, and if you could just write like a paragraph or a couple bullet points on like, the, the efficiency, like, what is our case? What am I gonna tell them?
Yeah, if you have, right, well, it, it should qualify because of the lower reduction of the D F or whatever, like, what should I tell them, and then I'll, I'll communicate with them. Thank you. Is there a belly plow, a dump truck with a belly plow, or is it an actual front plow blade plus bill?
Plus, they both fuck, okay.
Um, the first street culvert, I thought we had done that. Um, the First Street Culver, I thought we had done that.
Um, it's something we just didn't get to. It was in the budget.
Oh, so it was. See, these are the things that are was in the budget, but we didn't. So I remember it, but. Okay. And that's what we had in the budget was that we would use community works fund before? Um, the hand rails, so we got the engineer done?
Yeah, we're uh the the engineer is done. Um, this is just the they're um. They're waiting on the actual rails, I guess, to come in before they install them. Like, it's sort of this is what this is enforced. We have the engineering done now. It's just the work. Um, and it's just because it's the weight on there, I think, is what the reason is.
Right, so but the thirty thousand dollars is going to include putting them in and.
That's the rest of the actual, okay.
Um, he took off the enclosure, the lunchroom in the shop. What is, what do we need twenty five thousand dollars for a lunchroom shop?
So the idea is, is that when I asked them about this, is that essentially there's no room in the shop that is a clear, a quote unquote cleaner. Is that for our wastewater treatment operator goes in and out of the plant fifty times a day. And is just tracking everything everywhere in that building. And there's just not a quote unquote safe space. Um, or please block like a.
Let's see, tracking.
Well, just like going in and out of the building or that kind of ball. Yeah, there shouldn't be any.
Yeah, uh apparently it's the it's the wastewater. Operator, I I guess just this, um something that is probably better tied to an asset management plan before. We'd even consider it um.
Yes, please. And drop the budget by fifteen thousand dollars.
Um, water leak repair. So again, this one's coming out of our reserve, which we're trying to build. Um. Now, this is, we've already spent how much on chasing water leaks, so we were. Pretty sure that they were water leaks and sound nothing. I'm concerned that we're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars and still find nothing. What is this thirty thousand dollars?
What this is for is for actually um light aring the ground. It is for uh.
So it's not water leak repair, it's water leak lidar?
Sorry, yes, um inspection, um. But I'm still working with public works. I I have a couple alternatives. I've been talking to water people more than I'd like to admit. Um, as far as trying to figure out solutions to try and find the leaks. And uh the one is uh that's the, the next thing that I have to ask uh our public works about is um doing. Specific pressure testing in zones because we're on a loop system where we should be able to narrow it down on the loop. The the issue is always we might have to turn off parts of our town's water to do that. And that might be something we're pushing in. Of course, in summer months, um but that would be, and if there is uh if we miss out on that grant. That's where this would be an opportunity to look. And even if we do get it, this would be something that would be still due to take a look, but. I don't know what that would take or if that's possible. This was just something that somebody had told me that if you're on a loop system, it's possible. But that's. Um, it's it's a reasonable request. It'd be.
Yeah, you just don't wanna coming out of reserves. So if we can make sure that we figure out how to.
I guess my question, and it's not regarding advice, so I would follow guys, would that be light aring the entire village? Or this is just his own?
This is just his own, yeah.
So again, asset management. How much of the village is thirty thousand dollars if we get done? What is, what is the zone? Is it half the village, a quarter of the village, a third of the village?
About fifteen percent.
And what to fifteen percent are we gonna do?
To be determined. It's just to put it in the budget so then that we can figure out now where to have that conversation to start looking. And if um it would be more, again, depending on if the further inspections we would have in the spring. Um, and then if there's any, again, that that that, the location of where it would be that is. Um, we haven't even scratched that surface yet as far as where to be looking. We know our three spots and it's not.
If I may through the chair, um mayor, did we not share a project with the RECK where they lidar? The village?
Yeah, but not our, not our underground water.
Oh, so they didn't do the infrastructure? Okay, that's my question is.
So they did our mapping, like our entire community, which they, there's still some issues on there, but uh. That's what got done, but not, not the underground. Okay. Okay, I um if you guys can figure out how, where else we can get that, um if we're. Water is going to be such a huge um thing in the next five to ten years. Um, in in making sure that the whole system gets like. Starting with the second reserve reservoir, starting with the second line and then. Going into the community, um that. Yeah.
We need the reserves.
Um, so the public works tools, so seventeen thousand.
That combines about four or five uh things, um one uh being a a brush saw, um. Ethan, would you happen to have a chance of that previous? Um, there was, there was four tools um that were combined to make that seventeen five. Um, one was a brush saw, one was a pole saw. Um, for uh the trees, um.
So in the budget, and I don't know without which we like in our, that there was a line which that was hand tools. Now, a brush saw is not a hand tool. Uh, pole saw is a hand tool. Um, and without being able to quickly find it. Um, I'm wondering what is under the.
Deep hole, brush saw, pole saw, dirt screener?
Oh, yeah.
Water tapping machine? Those rules, yeah, yeah.
What is the water tapping machine?
Um, the tapping new pipe, like threading new pipe kind of thing?
What was that with?
I I thought it was actually something to do with our pump house. Um. Get back to you on that, I apologize. Um.
Um, quick question, reuse vehicle. Uh, the public works reserve, is that machinery equipment reserve?
Um, sorry. Uh, for the public works tools?
Just for the public works and gun.
Uh, yeah, that would be if we're talking about like, like power tools and that and stuff, yeah. Unless there's some other funding source. Like, I mean, yeah, you could use uh DRC.
But like the plow truck?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I mean, yeah.
The asset management project, I want, I know for the last six years that there have been grants. Study every year for asset management. Um. I wanna make a motion that we for sure do it in two thousand twenty five.
It's surely good to lead decide already number one. I know we have a lot of other studies to do, but yeah, it's gotta get done.
But we can get a grant, we'll do, hire somebody to do it. Um, so. And it's gonna be more than twenty thousand dollars. It's probably gonna go through seventy five thousand. Um, OCP study, we have to do it this year. Um, which ten thousand dollars I think is reasonable. Um, I don't know if we can get a grant. It says external grant, but I don't know where we would get.
So I I if you can't get a grant, I would say the um LG, LGHI funding for that L forty. Our asset management, very simply, every plan that we're planning on doing can go under that plan. Okay, asset management, um infrastructure study, um. All of it. There was a list of about twenty five different studies that you could pick from on there, so. Um, so all of that can be pulled from there for sure.
Yeah, I don't think that there's enough in it though to do asset management in that.
Yeah, like I don't know what we spent last year, um but I know like that would have been the one where we got the hundred and fifty thousand flat and then plus per capita.
Yeah, I don't recall it. I thought it was like a sixty five or one fifty six or something like that. It sounds familiar.
Yeah, and I, we might, we probably don't. You're absolutely right on that one.
Um, GIS mapping flyover. Um, so what is this? Because our GIS is done by the RECK.
They don't do flyovers, so the last.
Why do we need a flyover?
Well, it, it it helps with a lot of information as far as condition, location for zoning, um. Setbacks, um like we don't have anything that was built since twenty seventeen.
That's literally what the project was with the RECK years ago. They did a flyover mapping, dated lidar.
But that's probably what he's talking about.
Well, the thing is, is I asked the district, this is the where this complication, this may get complicated is that with the strategic plan that the district is doing for their GIS. I met with them last week and their consultant was kind of caught off guard that we're planning on doing the flyovers ourselves. Because from my perspective, that should be covered in our GIS contract. It's periodic flyovers every five years or so. Um, but they didn't see that, um didn't seem to agree, um but um that's. What it's for. And it's it's it really is just for, you know, help with that, our asset management plan. It will help with our zoning. And our variances immensely because we can see where things are built. So when people add new additions on since, say, twenty seventeen. We know that, hey, there's a new structure without a permit, um.
We're not gonna see that in the flyover.
You you do, um.
We're gonna, so those maps in our fall ways is what we got from the flyover? You can't see that in those, in those.
No, like our flowers will be the one right outside Chester's office. Like that would calculate it out because that uh has building footprints and.
Okay, um.
That's what it's for. I'm hoping the district will pay for them.
District will not pay for that. Um. But I think that we need to highlight that one. And and uh because I would much rather us focus on the asset management. And 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 the flyover, the mapping flyover, because all that's gonna do is add other work. And take away from that very important asset punishment thing. So I I think that we highlight it. Um, and uh and talk with the regional district to find out, um. But fifteen thousand dollars, I can hire somebody that has their drone license. Uh, for a lot less than that for the entire community and get a full on picture.
No, I know. This is, this number is based off of the city of Roslyn. They just did a flyover with the drone and it cost them twenty one. So that's why I'm saying fifteen.
Okay, um dike engineering report, um. Didn't we just get this done?
We have to get it done.
So we're gonna get another, oh gosh, we're gonna get another report to tell us that we did not do what we were told to do.
Lecture.
Lecture.
Correct, um if you, if you, if I really wanna, the the district is spending a hundred and seventy five thousand in this exact same day this year. And hopefully that will lead us to do an action plan for replacement, for actually buying the rock and putting it somewhere. Um, but I'll give up. Got two weeks. If you don't.
An action button.
So, um.
But we can use LG cap money for that. Okay, some dike work including riprap. Now, we ju- we just bought a bunch of. Riprap, so, um. Right? With the LG cap, is that not what we decided with that, that money that we had to?
There's something coming up on on that as well. Um, our. Our so when we had our electrician go over our solar lights and he says that is.
No, no, I'm talking riprap.
No, I know, but I mean for our LG cap money is that those solar lights are now our electrician says do not install them.
Okay, but did we not?
That was.
Put so much money towards riprap and so much money, like we divided some money?
Yeah, but the riprap was the end, was the the remainder, yeah. So then if we take that down, the the.
I see, okay.
Now we're spending an extra fifteen grand on radio.
So the LG cap was going to be for that one?
For the riprap?
For the riprap.
Yeah.
Um, scope and clean sewer?
This is just uh general maintenance. We did uh part of the town last year. It's just something that we just need to build into operations.
But we're taking it out of reserve?
Yes, it shouldn't be increased if I did.
Yeah, the only place you could really take that, uh 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 is out of reserves really? Like, I mean, if you're gonna put it in annual operating budget, it comes out of reserves, right?
Right, so. So.
Should I build, should I be building that ten thousand dollars into like kind of annual operating?
But this year, can we put it under community development?
Yep.
Can we do, can we take it out of there?
Yep.
Water reserve study.
Reservoir study.
Oh, sorry, I had to take my glasses off. Reservoir, okay, so that is, um. That kind of goes, can we hire somebody at the same time that does the asset management? Can we put those two together? Is there a possibility? Why not?
Well, I mean, I mean, it's they will, they they'll they'll come back and say it's two different scopes. Is because really what the the water reservoir is really just studying the reservoir and the line downs, where the assets is literally. Everything else on top of it.
So do, so I guess my thing is when I look at this and we go, water reservoir study for fifty thousand dollars. But the asset management project, which is massive for twenty thousand dollars, like. That's, it just doesn't even make any sense to me. Um, if anything, those numbers should be switched. Like the water reservoir study that we're gonna pay fifty thousand dollars for that or?
Well, I reached out to the district for engineering costs for our reservoir and I uh he he emailed me saying that. My email got lost in the shuffle, so I'm waiting to hear back what that number will actually be from the CAO at the district. So that number, the fifty thousand will change. It's just, that was a placeholder number.
So what's the study for?
Well, for the replacement of the actual reservoir and the line and what actually needs to get done. So if we're twinning it, if we're replacing it, if.
We have another study?
Yeah, yeah.
I wish that we could just use the money and just do the.
Just do it, yes.
Um, because then we're next down to reservoir inspection and cleaning. Um, which I I believe that that could come out of CD money, community development money also. Is that an annual expense or is that? No, we haven't done an inspection and a cleaning. Um, last year. It was in to do an inspection. Um, public works had put it up on their board, but it never ever brought down. So then it was gonna come out of C, um, community development money last year. Because it wasn't actually in the budget and so we were gonna have it, but it never ever got done, so it didn't come to us. Um. Decommission Ninth Street Wells. It's just, it's just an open thing that's, it's gonna be done at some point. The longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. The longer we wait, the more expensive it gets, um, um, I'm. Oh, it'd definitely be more than fifteen, um. But I think that it's one of those ones that we highlight, that we, if we.
Not priority.
Yeah, it's not up at the top of the list. And, um, the next two are.
Are we just throwing in the budget just 'cause? Well, tho- those, those are to do with our source water protection, was that they, one of their recommendations were to repair the wells. There was, there was a wall that was caving on each one that they. Asked us. Is that when the, the well door was curled and bending stuff at the bottom? Or was that?
Or blend out and then why the pump was getting?
Maybe, um, I, I'm just going off of what the source said, if there's. Uh, saltwater detection, um, they said that there was work needed on each of the wells. I think it's convenient, it's equally seventy-five hundred dollars on each one. That was just me picking the number for the, there's none.
Oh, so this isn't even actual numbers. This could be twenty thousand dollars or it could be five thousand dollars. We don't even know. So these are, these are highlighted too. Because we need to, we need to have some actual numbers if that's just a, a pick.
So it's the wall inside the, inside the well hole itself?
And the test well is Trozos?
They, they've, oh, in that source water, they suggested for a third test well.
Um.
So we're doing a new test well? Well, that, that's the ask, I guess, yeah, is to, to follow what was in the recommendations of the source water.
And, but where is this one? So, cause what I don't see on here is Trozos, um, where that. Water. Um, testing spot is, is in their basement, and we were told that it needs to come out of there. Um, and is that this what's going to replace that? Because it's supposed to be south of the wastewater plant?
Yeah.
And south of wastewater plant is Trozos, which ended up being in the basement, needs to come out of the basement. But it still has to be that far away from.
Yep.
So it's still on their land, so, or somebody's land, because we don't own land there. So is that what this test well is?
The idea is, is you have to get away from that one where we're going through this. But that's what they suggested in the source water, is that not to use that well anymore. Yeah, that's their clarification.
Yes. And, cause we, we need to do that one. That's, that was in our, our compliance. Thing, so, um. But that one al- also could come out of their own community funds.
Um, it could, uh, yeah, we should.
If, if, if not, the CD would cover it too. Okay, so we've gone from seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars, hopefully down to five hundred thousand dollars. But we'll see.
Yeah, you did increase a few things, yes. But yeah, for sure, yeah, yeah, I've seen asset management plan ranging for fifty dot hundred.
Yeah, yeah, and we've never looked at anything less than seventy-five, so that would be. If, if you could get it then for twenty, I'll hold to, oh, okay. Anything else on that page? Thank you, buddy.
I, I had a question, um. One thing that came up today is the meters. That's how I think it should be.
Well, it should be if we get the loan, I don't, or the grant. I don't know, was the grant, it was a hundred percent, was it?
It's a hundred percent and they got you the check before. Yeah. So, but the thing is, is it's like, I don't, we basically asked for pretty much the whole five million. Yeah. Um, so I'm not sure what we're gonna get. Well, no, and, and just on how we applied, it's like we might, well, they're only accepting, I think, seventeen or twenty-one communities, so it's, we're not. You know, depending on who applied, we might be at the right top of the list, but we might be right at the bottom, but it's one of those that. Okay, so then I guess my question is to, would the work get started in twenty twenty-five if we got the grant? Or is this like in twenty twenty-six? Like, when are they gonna decide? When are they gonna get the money? We, we don't hear until April of when we get, um, it's then, it's now. They would cut you the check right then and there for the five million and now everything is kind of your problem. Uh, in a sense, we start to work then in twenty twenty-five? Like, I guess what I'm wondering is like, if we put something in the budget, obviously contingent on getting the grant. Um, then it would be in the budget and Derek could go start working.
Right.
If it's not in the budget and they get the grant, then you'd have to do a budget amendment, can council approval.
But it's in the budget right now.
Yeah, and the models will put it in.
We're kind of, we're not, yeah, we're hiring.
Yeah.
It's in the budget.
Yeah, okay, so let's put it in the budget if we don't get the.
If we don't get it.
Yeah, okay, um. Literally for five minutes, like, you're asking us four point. Yeah, I'll throw that. Well, it was, they gave us two quotes and one was for nine hundred thousand and one was for four million. But the difference was, was putting it in the basements or not in the basements. In the basements, nine hundred grand, not in the basements, four million. So I said, well, assume we're not going in anybody's basement and we're drilling holes with the curb, and that's what we're doing. And the only ones we probably won't be able to do that for is our downtown core. We'll have to go inside those just because there's not. Cause you.
Like, because they don't have basements.
That's, yeah. But more just the spot for, for, so, but anyway, I, um.
Okay. Page twenty-three.
Yeah, so the twenty-three was really a suggestion, like, if, if the conversation went into prior, I was like, that's okay. Um, this is one ranking system that could be applied, you know, maybe that's something that, um. You know, the CEO picks a stat at if, if you need, like, if you, if you want to prioritize these things or anything on that, it is. Uh, this was just a suggestion. No, absolutely, and if I, if I mean, uh, the idea was, is I guess because of just. Gonna play the new personally part still, um, I don't really know where everybody's priorities is at this table, so I didn't really want to. Fill that out, particularly because a lot of this is basing it off of public works. Um, opinions and because we don't have that asset management plan, I, I'm not comfortable putting my own list on there because it's just. My, oh, general opinion and I wouldn't. You know, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. It's like, I mean, just as happy, say, put down the numbers and then. Have the direction, well, please rip that apart because this is just me guessing in a sense, so that's kind of why I did leave that. Blank because I did wanted to definitely get councils' just general sense of things first, and so now that. I have it, I, I can probably come back for the next meeting with a priority list, but I think, uh. We've nailed that down pretty good already, I think, um.
Yeah, I think that we've given you lots of direction on that list and bringing back some information for us. So we can mull it over, we all got this by email, um, that, you know, we, we're not gonna go over stuff. On that today, but the, this way we can hear. Our answers, our questions to, to the, that part. And, uh, and then at our next meeting, have a, um, little bit more.
Yeah, yeah.
Clearer picture.
Yeah. No, absolutely, and, yeah.
So I'm just gonna, just before you leave, and open the floor up again to everybody in the public, but any questions on our capital budget? No? And you have any question? No? Um, Andrew or S H, do you have any questions? And if you do, please unmute. During that, we will move on. Alrighty.
Yes. There is a, there's a washing, please.
Yes, let's take a break. We're just gonna pause for, it's nine oh three. Make a, a flyover break.
Good discussion, guys, great questions. I, uh. Missed felt flyover in the capital plan, I noticed.
That's usually.
I usually have a couple gens in there. This part just for down there?
Just seeing that they're. Cause maybe, maybe we have that there, it's temporary, the, oh, it might be.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would be great.
So when they did these lights, they. Probably numbered out.
Yes, we talked to our residential electricians.
That, these ones haven't worked as long as I've been in.
That's right, but these lights are done before that. They were done last. But I didn't.
I mean, you just know that they don't work.
I just saw it, I played something in before.
Oh, I better plug it back in, just in case somebody wants air conditioning in the next three days.
What? Yeah, right.
It was this morning, I lost, it was twenty-two.
Have my windshield replaced and now my temperature sensor's off and it's about five or six degrees warm, so. I'll hop in the vehicle and it's like, oh, minus five, and it's like, it's not minus five.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I know, that's kind of, that would be great discussion around those things, and, sorry, so, well, I'm like, but there's quite a lot to go over.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the dialogue and, and all the interest and, yeah.
It would be, um, nice to have more people coming to listen, because there's.
Yeah.
There's.
Yes, or whenever you wanna meet up, but I guess. Yeah, send me calendar invite for pushing in later. And then I'll, I'll come here and we can put in a few hours together and like be over year end for twenty twenty-four stuff, because I'll need to know. Yeah, what projects were completed last year and which ones weren't, or I, I, they voted to, like, all that stuff. So Randy should be here too. Cause she'll have an idea of the GL stuff, so we know that and then we can kind of go over some of that, some of this. Yeah, yeah.
Don't leave just that. These fellow dudes, greats, this is what appears. So a little different convene. So I just wanna come, with us going over the utility rates, um. Now, are you, for the next meeting, when we go over budget again, will you bring out these numbers?
Um, Brandy or. So they should be, yeah, we need to pass a new bylaw for the new rates for utilities. Essentially, that's the next step.
Right, okay, but, but you figure out these numbers?
Um, no. Yeah, I just told Brandy a, uh, four point five percent increase or whatever the increase is, and then she'll do that and she'll get the bylaw.
Okay.
So I can send a note out if, if, if we're going with what was in the budget for the utility increases, then I can send a note to Brandy and I'll CC you.
That's where I just wanted to go back is, is, how's everybody feeling about that utility? Um, the water and sewer increase, the garbage, there's nothing, it's out of our hands, like the garbage is, is what it is. Um, but the water and sewer, with what the CFO presented, um. So the, the, the sewer one is the one that, that, the increase is basically going into reserve. That whole increase, where the water is kind of half and half.
With the changes that we've made on our capital expenses and differing them to other funding sources, that should, will that impact?
The utilities? No.
Not really. Because like, we're, we're just getting, what I'd like to do is just get us to a better place.
Yeah.
But I don't have the number that we need to get to without that asset management plan. So, yeah, we're leaving in some pressure, which will form our resources a little bit more, but I would still suggest to make those increases. Go ahead for the meeting, it's your call, yeah.
Yes, I agree, because, um, with the reserves, you're gonna start to have all your, your maintenance that hasn't been done.
Yeah.
On top of that, so it's gonna, it's gonna get costly.
Yeah, and it's better, just kind of smooth it out over time, you know, instead of leaving low and then, yeah, two years from now, oh, let's. Increase in forty percent, right? Like, let's just keep that steady increase going.
How are you feeling?
I have to figure the C O, the steady increases. That's, yeah, no, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so, um, so then you guys have the goal ahead, um. And we don't need to make a motion, we're, we're directing staff to go ahead with the, the bylaw.
Okay.
Um, and the sooner the better, so it's easier on people, we get it out in March instead of waiting.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get that info from Brandy tomorrow, right away, so that people start looking at it and it's pretty handoff on it, but I also. Big hope of that. Yeah, so absolutely, Brandy and I have already talked about trying to get it out, you know, sooner the better, so, um, we're kind of. In theory, somewhat ready, I mean, in a sense of this happening.
Okay.
She won't be caught off guard, but I'd say.
Okay. Alrighty, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we're just gonna continue on this, uh, since we're only at.
Oh, no, I know, I know.
That council received information that drives, uh, my, um, in two thousand twenty-five by just floor discussion. Um, any questions, any more questions? All in favor? Um, new business, now an adoption of the amendments, uh, that the amendments are regular meetings. Uh, oh, one twenty-five, oh, two thirty, January twenty, or January fourteen, two thousand twenty-five, the adopters that presented. Comment?
All second.
Is there any questions on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Period. That the minutes of the special council meeting of Monday, January twenty, two thousand twenty-five, the adopters has presented. Any questions on that one? Now, that one was the one that we kind of talked about. Um, and it's farther in, or are we talking about when?
Uh, it's, it's.
Farthering, okay. I just, I don't look at so many, the first day, the last two days, uh, all in favor?
Yeah.
Carry. Uh, referrals from delegation, primary minutes and policy review, we're all now. Bylaw developments review, that is a zoning bylaw amendment at ten twenty-three Glendale Avenue. That is the, the house that we were subdividing out, um. By law, seven sixty, two thousand twenty-five. Um, that, the zoning bylaw amendment, ten twenty-three Glendale Avenue, by law number seven. Sixty, two thousand twenty-five, being introduced and given first, second, and third reading.
All second.
Any questions or comments on that? No? Hey, now that it's had its three readings, be reconsidered and adopted. All in favor? Um, accounts payable, that coun- council receiver information list, so accounts payable, checks and line fund transfers from January tenth. February sixth, two thousand twenty-five, total two hundred thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. All second. Any questions? The base, they've, um, one because we have that final.
Yeah, if you go to our school payment and then also our city of Nelson card as well. And then, yeah. Nothing for me.
The voting of all your expenses, is that like a photo copy that are in this bill?
Yeah. How our photo copies works is every single piece of paper that goes through, if it's black and white. It gets charged a penny, and if it's color, it gets charged like eleven cents for every page. So that's why when I ask, if, when we do a report or something and, and it's like ninety pages long and I ask everybody to bring it back. So, all on payment?
Yeah.
Here it is. Okay, uh, oh, right, you're doing very good walking. Now I remember. So do you want to speak on it?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so, um, in our, um, you know, our meeting where we decided to spend the LG cap money. We went and ran this plaza idea of the three solar lights along the trail by our electrician. He, um, was very adamant that the just based on the location of the lights and the wattage available. That if if we wanted lights, we would have to wire them. Is that there's just not enough sunlight and enough power, uh, from the lighting, uh, from those panels, from the lights that would make it justified. He says your lights would work for a couple of hours in the evening in the summer and in the winter they wouldn't work at all. Just based on where the lights are in location to the mountain. Um, that's just his opinion. He says there is an absolute way that we can, um, run lights from the power in the radio station. If we would have to approach the ministry, um, to see where that is and if they would do that. Um, we can get this funded through active transportation grant, um, that is, um, coming up, um, as far as that. So we don't have to use LG cap. We can use different money and it also it includes the wiring because it's tied to active transportation. It doesn't hurt. It's more about the safety and the easeability of use of the walking. So power and power doesn't matter. It's just cool. It's for the having the light. So there is an option. You just still have those lights. It's just not under this grant. And so that now, the idea is, is that if we're taking this out of the LG cap funding now, what do we use that approximately fifteen thousand dollars for? Now, is it increasing riprap? Is it something else that council had in mind? Um, that is.
Increasing the riprap. Let's get it out there. That's what we just said. That's what our meeting was all about, right? Like, if we couldn't do this, so just get riprap. It takes it off of our capital and it keeps that down.
Okay.
So, um, but we need to have, you need to make a note about putting this on the budget. So it's if we don't get a grant, we don't get a grant, but it needs to be on the budget, just like the the wa- water meter.
Yes.
Isn't there something once we look at brand count up right now?
Active transportation?
Yeah.
It's coming up. It is, uh, the way it works out is that this is where it's it's incredibly frustrating for me just because I'm getting these reminders of these grants. Saying, hey, you have three weeks to apply and it's the first I hear of it.
Yeah.
Um, and yeah, so our deadline is the twenty sixth, the day after our council meeting. So.
So let's make a motion to direct staff to apply for the active transportation light, um, grant, for active transportation grant for the solar light.
The i- if I'm being fair, before we get into that, the 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 active transportation grant includes, uh, any repair of our sidewalks, any benches, any trees, anything to do with. So we can, we can.
Okay, then just apply for.
Yeah, every rate.
That we possibly can.
Active transportation grant. To improve.
Active transportation. Yeah, so any.
That was some pretty awesome stuff in there.
It's unbelievable. So, for example, if we wanted to put raised sidewalks where our paved walking infrastructure is covered. We want to repair that? Covered.
Okay, so this is. This is direct staff to apply for. The active transportation grant to improve Samuel's active transportation. That covers it. That gives you the ability to apply. Um, and you would like to make the motion and you'd like to second it?
I'll be favored.
And and you would be in favor.
Do this in thirteen minutes?
We're trying.
Okay.
Um, okay, so then, um. We don't need a motion to remove the solar lights from the LG. We don't need a motion for that. Um, it's a direction to increase the riprap.
Take.
Okay. And the economy base and trust, uh, reach expression of interest. Go.
Okay, so this ties to, um, uh, any kind of accessibility enhancements for recreation. Um, the auctions can be any kind of ramps, any kind of, um, the one auction we had that's for, um. That that is available is pouring glory. It covers, um, for the playgrounds if we wanted to do that. Um, we don't need any kind of business plan or any kind of budget at this point. It's just an experiment of interest. The grant that they're offering is for fifty thousand dollars maximum. They will consider more if the application. But this is just for the expression of interest that we want to look into something like this. So it doesn't have to be that. We can literally, like the active transportation, uh, we can pretty much shotgun to anything that is to do with. Enhancing that for any of our recreation facilities for accessibility. So sidewalks, ramps, anything that way. Again, it doesn't, we can just throw it on the list in the idea of maybe if that's two hundred thousand dollars, uh, then we can. Use the other items on the expression of interest. It won't hold us to the form. Person.
Comment.
Okay.
You pay.
Um, all in favor?
One hundred.
Um, okay, so I just want to make note that that I think is the same stuff that's at the at the post office.
Okay.
We need to have a look at that because it's split and it's rate rising. And I wouldn't want us to spend fifty thousand dollars on something that we have to. That's not two years old.
Yeah, I seen that and actually it was funny actually the same thing.
I'm not saying not to, but we need to make sure that we're not just getting money just so we have something worth it. Um, okay, so, okay, we're on to that stuff. Okay, so I'm just going to speak on this one. Um, the C O has got a report here. Um, there is a little bit of a miscommunication on this. This is the two pieces of property that basically is third street that we took out. Um, so we could put housing there because you'll never ever have a, uh, you'll never ever have road there. It's just too steep. Um, and so what we have talked about is actually having housing there, not selling it to an individual. And that just wants to buy it and have an empty lot because we're trying to increase our housing. And that's where he thought that that's where we were wanting to go. And that's why the report is the way it's fitting in front of us instead of having something that. How do we, um, look at going forward with increasing housing it it there? Um, whether it be a fourplex or an eightplex at the bottom because it's quite a large piece. So because of our time and it's not something that has to be dealt with, I want us to just table this for another meeting. And and then go forward with that. So we'll, um, um, we'll table it to, I don't know. I let's table it to March.
First being March.
Well, just say March.
Alright.
And would you like to second that?
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to go to the softball, um, resurfacing and enhancing of K P Park. And I'm just gonna speak a little bit on this because I've been, we had our rector's recreation meeting last night. So I was able to ask, um, the Joe Jerko about what it would cost. Um, and and the 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 ability to be able to do what what is being asked. First of all, I'm just gonna talk about the fence. So they're talking about building an exterior fence. Well, putting a fence around K P Park, um, creates a bunch of things. It creates, what do we do for July first, when we always bring in our our parade into our park? Um, um, even if we had an opening or whatever. So we're saying that people can go in there on July first and and that's the only time. Um, that in the letter it states about pooping dogs out. Well, somebody's gonna just walks through in another way to get in. But that's not gonna work. Um. So the fence thing going around is not a feasible thing, first of all, for us. Um, we just saw a budget of what was sitting in front of us. Um, so we're, I I don't want to waste much time on the fence. Um, increasing enforcement, while we have a hard enough time, we we get enforcement out here one day a week, four, four hours a day. Um, and I tried to get somebody not put a walk up horse across the field on July first and got, you know, thumbs up. And and nothing happened. So, um, what our biggest thing is they they want to do the infield. They want the infield, um, and and using the, it's not in here. But the discussion was with the gentleman is that they want the actual clay, which is quite expensive. Nelson actually is regretting putting clay in, even though it's what is used in a lot of other parks in that. It's re- uh, really high maintenance. It's high FOS to put it in, high maintenance. Um, and and there, so my suggestion to, um, council. Is that there hasn't been, um, the proper maintenance on our on our parts, on our K P park. For ball for a few years. So it used to be the ball teams used to come in and they used to get the aerator from the golf course. And they used to aerate it, then they used to sand it and put, all of that stuff. Changed and we all know why it changed. There was some kerfuffle. But we're not, we're not putting the money back into our park. So that's something that we need to with our reserve, which I forgot about that tonight. Um, is have that we we do with a a a phase three plan. So our first year is that we maybe do aerating and and get the outfield back up to. Because it's it's becoming dangerous. Um, so we work on our outfield this year and and make sure that we have that very. It's supposed to be aerated every year with sanding, but we need major work this year. And that would come out of our perks thing. Um, and then how we fix the infield, I don't know. We need to do a little bit more instruction on that and find out. Um, and but the other thing is, is that there's a fence that's at the south end of K P Park that was in this letter that needs to be looked at. That there's, I don't know what it is, but public works needs to go and look at it. If it's a liability, we need to get that fixed. Do you look at it?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Um, another kind of idea I had was maybe suggesting that the ball could apply for like a community gaming grant. Uh, you have to be a nonprofit, but I've seen other communities get some funding, some pretty large chunks of funding to resurface, um, fields. So if they were able to secure that funding at a nonprofit and then potentially we could partner with them for help with the work.
Right.
Um, and I'm not sure what other grants are out there, but that's one that I did find that might help.
Good idea of funding. It's usually always been, and even in Nelson, it's they're baseball. It's the baseball te- teams.
Yeah.
That and that's what it used to be, right? It was always the ball teams that would go and do the work.
Who's applying for the grant? It has to be a nonprofit. It can't come from a municipality. So we're not.
No, I would just, if it.
Because you got love.
If anything, I'd be just looking for and just saying, here it is.
Yeah.
At at most.
Yeah.
I hate to do a motion to extend the, probably in fifteen years, nine point five.
Okay.
I know which I.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, so, um, so the recommendation is that council direct staff to advise the Samuel softball board that a review of K P Park will be completed in two thousand twenty five. Does not help them. Um, I think that a good direction to staff would be to advise them about the community gaming grant, which does not need to be a motion. We can just give that direction.
There should be a motion for.
For the phase, for the.
Three phase.
Two, three phases of of doing the work to get that park back up to park. Um, so that's something that needs to go in the in the budget because that is going to affect the workload of that.
So if, if I may, uh, just to clear clarify, so for year one, it would be just taking care of the outfield where we're aerating it, sanding it, just getting it to where it needs to be.
And fertilizer.
And fertilizer, okay. And then, um, year two is infield? So where is that to be determined?
Year, year one, it, the outfield is going to be every year.
Yeah.
Yeah. But year one, we're going to focus on that.
Okay.
And and then hopefully if these guys are able to get the money, then we can partner with them. But we can just put, we can, it doesn't, there's nothing in that has to go in the budget because it would just go into park.
Right, yeah, gotcha. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, um, okay, so now we're headed to the next one. Um. Oh, the other thing that I wanted to just bring up, just for one thing, is in the letter, it said the surfaces are hard and uneven, littered with plastic debris from fireworks.
Yeah.
Um, are we not? Can we ask staff if we're not taking the time to think up garbage? I I've never ever seen it and I coached for years. So can we see what, um, or maybe just even ask them? Are they, I don't, I don't know. I've never seen it all littered with, um, that, so.
One of them maybe.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so this is the development fee refund request. Would you like to speak on this?
Um, yeah, sure. Um, what this was is that there was a, um, rezoning application for, um, to tie in our bill forty four for a secondary, uh, dwelling. Um, uh, located seven forty's A B, um, which is across from the, uh, high school. And, uh, basically what had happened is they had applied for rezoning and a variance to allow for the secondary, um, dwelling. Um, and through the, um, consultation, um, this is, uh, again, prior to me starting. Uh, the owner was advised that there's going to be complications with the development because he is on there on the floodplain. Um, so there would need to be, um, additional just safety measures put in, either rotating wall or you'd have to build up the, uh, the the building to meet, um, the floodplain standards. Um, so, um, basically, um, that advice was given, um, and then the applicant proceeded to apply. And then, uh, upon it getting approval, realizing that the work that needed to go into the construction. Um, and it being a significant cost, now is asking to basically undo the process, um, which is that he's asking for the refunds. But, um, the part, I guess, from my perspective is that with those applications already approved, like the zoning bylaws already changed for that property. Is from a real estate perspective, it's value added. Um, is that now he is literally the only property that's approved for a second dwelling in town? And to go in, I guess, reverse that would be a lot more complicated as far as time and everything that it's worth, uh, I mean, to to do it. But also, very understandably, in our bylaw, it says that you have a certain window to ask for a refund. And that wasn't, I guess, taken advantage of. So that's kind of where we're at. So, um, it's, the work has all been done and so that now they're asking for a refund in the idea that, um, we. That their concern was is that they weren't necessarily told about the increased construction conditions, um, for being on the floodplain, which. I have confirmation in the emails that, um, our planner that we contracted out gave them that advice on, on these emails and on the fifteenth and sixteenth of May. So, um, they were made aware. It's just, I I don't know if there wasn't diligence followed or or what have you. I'm not trying to, um, pick apart the reasoning. It's just, we're at where we're at now. Um.
Then how you gonna fight if they fight, like if you don't give them the refund, what's their opportunity to fight?
There isn't. This is, this is coming to you guys and for your motion because as the approving officer and everything in the bylaw is that I've already told him no. In every avenue that he's asked, it's just now this is would be the last resort is bringing it to you. is that I've already told him no in every avenue that he's asked, it's just now this is, would be the last resort is bringing it to you guys.
Any other questions? I just wanna, um, in the letter that we've received from this gentleman, he says in his opinion, the rezoning for this lot was imperative in the above bylaw by limit to secondary suites. But it's from the ground up, it's not, if he had to put ten feet of ground cover, it would still be from the ground up.
Right.
So, because this is in our package, if somebody asks you about that, that that is an incorrect statement.
Well, a- and if I may, through the church, on that part of the statement itself, he asked for the property rezoned, and then he's saying that it was rezoned in error, so it's his error because he asked to rezon.
No, what he's saying is that that the bylaws, that you can't, you have that, I.
I get that part of it, I'm just saying, he he asked for a refund because he paid to have his property rezoned. In my opinion, the rezoning for this lot was in a error, and then why did he ask for it if he already knew the bylaw? I feel you.
Well, that that was where, yeah, no, it was where he misconterred what it was, and, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, the the first conversation I had with him was explaining that, it's like, no, no, it's from where the building is, it's not where you're adding the fill, right, so.
So the question before us is, um, whether we deny the request for the money going back or give it back. Um, I'm going to, I know how much work we did as a council when it come to the table, and I know how much work it was, um, going with our plan, um, and the back and forth and and stuff like that. Um, so I'm going to, uh, read the recommendation and see where we go. The council denied the request for the zoning amendment and variant fees for seven forty Davie Avenue.
I'll move.
Same.
Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Most carry. Okay, so we're, uh, correspondent, anybody wanna talk about the correspondence? That council received information for the following correspondence, heard in B C. All right.
All second.
All in favor? Carry. Report. Counterbox. Counterbeat.
Nothing from me.
Counter goes not here, counter, you.
Uh, I'll be attending the library meeting tomorrow. I don't know. Library is reported again.
Okay.
Next time.
Thanks, Max. And, um, mine was pretty, we're we're just doing nothing but budgets right now, so, um, that's, it's happening. That the verbal reports matter in town, or do you receive information?
Move.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Um, both question three. I'm gonna start with the ones online first this time. S H or Andrew, do you, either one of you have any questions for us? Hearing none, thank you for attending. Nothing? Oh. No. Okay. Um, adjourned.
Oh, dude.
When did you guys?
I'm here at five thirty. You went a couple of naps at all.
Hey. Good night, thanks, Mel.
I was jealous.